I would like to welcome all of you to the April 5th Planning Commission meeting. Would you please rise and join us in an invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight to conduct the people's business, Lord. We just pray that you give us clear mind, clear vision to handle the people's business here tonight, Lord. Be with the folks that are here, be with the folks as we travel and go to our homes later that these storms come through that will not affect us any way, in a negative way, Lord. And we just ask you to be with the people of Ukraine as this war continues on, Lord. Comfort them during this time, and we ask it in your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing I would like to do is to go over the meeting procedures with all of you. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinances and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their requests to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of the applicants to make presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans. Public comments on site plans will be limited to 15 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of three minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Okay, let's, are there any Planning Commissions, excuse me, any Planning Commission announcements? Stephanie?
Good evening, Stephanie Lee, Planning Manager. I just want to let you all know, I'm sure you've received an email, but we do have the draft of the zoning code, the draft V1 that is available on the website now. There's also a redline version that just got uploaded today that shows some of the changes between the last draft that was released a couple of weeks ago and this one. We will be accepting comments through June 3rd. Right now, we are looking at increasing our public outreach and stakeholder meetings. So we're currently looking at how to structure that throughout this year as we have the different drafts of the zoning code. So if you have any thoughts on that or any particular comments or suggestions on how we may want to structure those stakeholder meetings or subcommittees, you feel free to reach out to Pam Thompson or me and share those ideas with us because right now, we're looking at the best way to handle that and make sure we're getting everyone in the community involved in that process. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the special called meeting held March 8th, 2022, subject to any necessary corrections.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the special called meeting from March 8th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposition? Okay, passes. We're going to next discuss the proposed amendment to the bylaws of the Glen County Planning Commissions regarding the Office of Secretary.
So there is a proposed amendment to the Planning Commission bylaws that's in your packet. And what this would include would be some information or some language that would change some of the current verbiage regarding the Office of the Secretary. So as you may know, Ms. Janet Loving retired this past year, and she has been elected as a Secretary of the Planning Commissions for many years. And what this would do would be, would enable that secretary position to be any of our county staff. So in case the normal, the normal person that usually is the secretary role is not available that evening, then another planner, another county staff member could take minutes and serve as a secretary. So it's just making that change to the bylaws. And this is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, so this will also go in front of the IPC before it goes to the Board. So your possible notions to be, to recommend this amendment, or to revise it, or defer it, or recommend denial. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And Ms. Proveno is also here to answer any questions on that as well.
I never have understood why it was an elected position to start with. It was just, you know, it's always been the staff. And so I just, unless any of my other commissioners object, I'd like just to make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the amendment to the bylaws as presented.
Second.
Commissioners, what do you say, have you been in favor?
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is SP 4883 Retreat at Golden Isles Multi-Family Development. And Mr. Maurice Postal is here to present.
Yeah, Maurice Postal, Planning and Zoning. The applicant is seeking site plan approval for 130 multifamily units at 113 Mag Hunt Way. This site previously had received site plan approval in 2008 for 138 multifamily units. Water and sewer lines were run to the site in anticipation of the project being built out for the 138 units, however, that never occurred. The property was foreclosed on in 2010, and the current property owner, Mr. Allen, acquired the property in 2014. And this is the zoning map for the area, showing that most of the area is in the Golden Isles Gateway Pause BD. And this is the site plan showing the 130 proposed units. And these are the conceptual elevations for what the quadruplexes will look like. And we are recommending approval as presented. And Mr. Allen's here tonight.
Okay, this is a public comment period. Would Mr. Allen like to come up and speak first?
Sure, unless you have any questions for me.
Do we have any questions for Maurice? Mr. Allen, would you like to speak?
Are there any questions from the Commission?
Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Allen, how long do you propose the project? Oh, gosh, a good question. We're probably going to do it in three separate phases. And the way it's set up right now, without having a pointer or something to explain the logistical way it's laid out, there's a cul-de-sac that's partially paved already. We've got about another 600 feet of unpaved area. We've already got water and sewer lines and things of that nature. So we're going to deem that as phase one. We plan to do that pretty much right away as soon as we get, you know, site plan approval, as soon as we move forward, we can get permitting. We're planning to do that right away. And if all takes traction and gets a little momentum, we're going to go right into phase two and phase three. Are you going to sell these units? Are you going to retain them? Was the question to sell? Are you going to sell them? No, my intention is to keep these for rental. Yes, sir, for investment property, individual.
Any other questions? Okay, as I said, this is a public comment period. And so is there anyone in the audience who would like to come up and speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition of this project? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
I make a motion to approve SP 4883.
Second.
All in favor? It's approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, our next project is SP 4913 Brunswick Storage Phase Two.
Good evening. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. All right, so SP 4913. There is an expedited subdivision that was used to address the easement excess 4960. Also, this has been approved for a conditional use permit by the Mainland Planning Commission, six to zero, and also by the Board of Commissioners unanimously. Here's the zoning map. It's comprised of 100 and 200 Daniel Lane. Here's the site plan. Conceptual elevations for the project. And your possible actions. We do have Jake Hightower here to speak on behalf of the owner.
Jake, would you like to come forward?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time tonight. Jake Hightower with Robert's Civil Engineering, here to ask that you approve this site plan as presented and also available to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Hightower or Mr. Carrington? Okay, this is a public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this project? Please come to the podium. Is there anyone in opposition? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve SP 4913 as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Chris. Next up is, again, Maurice Postal with SP 4949-275, Harry Driggers Boulevard, Multifamily Development.
Good evening, again. Maurice Postal, Planning and Zoning. The applicant's asking for site plan approval for 140 multifamily units at 275 Harry Driggers Boulevard. This site is in between Golden Isles Baptist Church and the Fox Run Duplex subdivision. The nearest multifamily project to this site is the Retreat at Grand Lake, which is around 800 feet away. And the right-of-way width along this project section of Harry Driggers Boulevard is pretty wide, 165 feet, which is sufficient for future roadway improvements without needing to acquire any property. And this is the zoning map for the site, showing the church right here and Fox Run right here. And this is the submitted site plan. And these are the conceptual elevations for the site. And we are recommending approval as presented. And Mr. Hightower is here again to speak for this project, too.
Mr. Hightower, would you like to come up?
Good evening. Jake Hightower, again, with Robert's Civil Engineering, also here to ask that you approve this site plan as presented and available to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have a question for staff, just curiosity question, and I really should have asked it on the last, the first, the first one. Does the staff look at all of that? We have a lot of things named Retreat. And it's got to be confusing the police and everyone else. And I know this, I don't see a name for this one yet, but certainly.
Well, yeah, this doesn't have a name yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Our GIS department actually does look at things like that. I think a lot of Oaks is something that's a big known oak, and so many things are named Oaks, but Retreat hasn't been banned yet, but.
I was just curious.
Maybe it should be.
Don't name it Retreat.
Any other questions?
Between Fox Run and this new development, will there be any buffers or will?
Yeah, there's a type A buffer shown on the site plan.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
This is, yeah, this is a, this is a public hearing, and if you would like to speak in favor of this, please come to the podium and state your name. Certainly, come ahead. Just introduce yourself.
Yes, I'm Richard Salo. I live really in Eagle Crest, right across Driggers. And I can't see the map very well, so I'm not sure which one is Driggers. I assume Driggers is the right vertical in that plan. No, okay, so then I go back to the development that we just had up. And that, I was trying to orient myself, where Driggers is on the right vertical? And what about a sound barrier with 95? Is that in the plans?
As far as I know, it's not in the plan. That's correct, right, Jake?
See, when the, when the church was put in, we got a significant increase in sound into Eagle Crest, even though they put a berm up. And it actually stood at a point where I can't sit in my backyard. I can't hear the birds. So it's just interesting. And I see there's going to be one entrance on the.
Yeah, that's correct.
So that's my comment, is, is a sound barrier. Certainly, the entrance there needs to be planned well because there's a curve right above to the south where people like to accelerate coming around. But, so the entrance needs to be well located. And my question on sound, I'm pretty unhappy with what's happened to the neighborhood with the, with the sound from the highway. So, thank you.
Sir, just, sir, just for clarification, the Georgia DOT is the one that puts up those sound barriers that you see all along 95. And it takes like pulling teeth to get them put in. And so, you know.
Yeah, I was sorry that when we, when they started that one, that they didn't continue it.
Yes, sir. But the best, the best alternative is just a berm. But other than the sound barriers, you can pretty much forget it.
That, the berm settles. I bet that berm behind the church has dropped two, three feet. And I think it works better when you're right up against it. You go 800 feet in, like where I'm at, 800, 850, 900 feet in, the sound just gets right to you. So it's, it's really been a disappointment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm not sure if he was speaking for or against, or just asking, asking a question, but is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this project? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this project? Please come forward. Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve SP 4949 as presented.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. The next, the next project is SP 4972 Clement Bell Farms Multifamily Development, again being presented by Maurice Postal.
Good evening. In this case, the applicant is asking for site plan approval for 64 multifamily units, and the property is addressed at 145 Bell Cut Off Road. This site was rezoned by the Board of Commissioners last year from forest agricultural to medium residential, and the Commission did impose four separate conditions. Any multifamily residential use on this site must have direct access to Highway 17, either by use of an excess easement or by buying land to create an access road. Access to Dusty Lane and Bell Cut Off Road was to be restricted to emergency vehicles and facilities maintenance vehicles only. Fencing was required between the site and the three residential lots on Bell Cut Off Road. And fencing was required between the site and those lots. And the fencing was required to be the same type that was approved in the Southern Retreat, RV Park rezoning, which is an eight-foot privacy fence. The concept plan showed to both the MPC and the Commission last year showed a total of 72 proposed units, and the current site plan application is for 64 units. And this is the zoning map showing the site that was rezoned last year. And this is the site plan. And again, the buffers that were required for this site were the eight-foot privacy fence between the site and these three lots on Bell Cut Off Road, and that was the Commission condition. And the zoning ordinance would require the 10-foot wide right-of-way buffer along Dusty Lane. And the site plan shows that the buffers being provided are the eight-foot tall privacy fence as required and 12-foot wide natural buffer around that fence. Along Dusty Lane, there's a 20-foot wide natural buffer and a six-foot privacy fence. And on the remaining property lines, there's a six-foot privacy fence and a 12-foot wide natural buffer shown. And as far as access requirements, as I stated previously, the BOC imposed a condition saying that there could be no access to Dusty Lane and Bell Cut Off except for emergency vehicles and facilities maintenance vehicles. And the site, of course, must have direct access to 17. And on the site plan, the site has no access to Dusty Lane whatsoever. And the only access to Bell Cut Off Road is the gravel road and the emergency gate. And the applicant has been working with GDOT on the alignment of the access road to Highway 17. GDOT has asked them that the access road align with Martin Palmer Drive on the southern side of US 17, as shown in the emails that were in the packet. And this is the depiction right here. And these are conceptual elevations for the project, showing the two-story apartment buildings. We are recommending approval as presented. And Jake Hightower is here, and as well as the applicant, Mr. Davenport.
Does anybody have any questions for Maurice before Jake comes up?
Maurice, I have a question, just because, I guess my memory's not serving me well. So I commend Mr. Davenport for having an emergency entrance. But we've had lots of discussions about that, but we just approved two that didn't have an emergency entrance that only had one access road. So I'm just curious where the, is, is his emergency access required?
No, it's by choice.
Okay. So we've gone back to, we don't care where the fire.
Well, no, we, we've talked a lot about the second emergency entrance. And if you look at the fire code, it specifically says single family and duplex developments. It's actually not required of a multifamily project.
Great. Just looking for some clarity there.
Any other questions for Maurice? Mr. Hightower, would you like to come forward?
Good evening. Jake Hightower with Robert's Civil Engineering, here and available to answer any questions for this development. And we ask that you approve it as presented. And then also, Mr. Davenport is here as well, if you'd like to ask him any questions.
Would you like to come forward? Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I do. Mr. Davenport, how are you tonight?
Great, thank you.
Good. Could you please clarify whether this is Section 8 housing or not? Every time someone calls me, they refer to it as Section 8 housing. It was my understanding that it was not going to be. Is that correct?
I do not have any Section 8. The old project-based Section 8 is pretty much gone these days. There are no project-based Section 8 vouchers associated with this development. It is strictly market, it's a. It is strictly market, it's a mix of market rate units and affordable units financed with tax credits. So instead of the government paying the rent every month, like Section 8, the subsidy, if you will, comes in during construction. So I may, I have a considerably lower debt on this development than I normally would, which allows me to charge rents that are affordable to people in our community that are, that are wage earners. So it's strictly tax credit and market rate units.
Yes, sir. One other question. The people that live in this housing complex, they have to go through a background check? And they have to go through a credit check, is that correct?
Yes, we're, the management company has a standard procedure that they follow, that follows all the fair housing guidelines, of which background, income, rental history, all that, all that information is, is gathered, and then a decision is made whether they qualify or not.
Mr. Davenport, looking at this, and we've went through this before, you know, you're going to be coming out on 17 by the fire, fire station, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And getting to Commissioner News, why do you need the emergency entrance if the fire department is right by the right-of-way on 17? Is there a maintenance or any kind of heating or cooling, maybe something you'll have to?
It's, it's just a matter of trying to be prudent and provide, if there's ever a fire, I certainly don't want to be, and we have an issue, I certainly don't want it to be that I didn't make every accommodation for emergency vehicles. Just trying to be prudent.
Commissioner Clark, also, those emergency entrances and exits, construction during the construction phase, a lot of times, the construction workers enter and exit through that instead of going out on the highway.
I got you.
And it also, I mean, what it was explained to me by staff in the past, I mean, although there's not large trees, it could be that the other, you know, there's a wreck on 17 that blocks the main entrance, it gets you another way to get emergency vehicles in that, that if, you know, so I think it's a good thing, I just thought if we were going to require it, it need to be required of all, so.
And, and, you know, in this case, because the fire station, should it be an issue? No, but if there ever is, and I didn't make the accommodation for it, I'm liable, and it's just trying to be prudent.
Yeah, okay. And one other question, have you purchased this 10 acres or is it pending on?
It, it, as we finish this process, I think we're scheduled to close, I believe, in June is our actual closing date, give or take.
Yeah, I was just curious if there was, and I think you've already shifted, looking at the plans, you've shifted the buildings that you're now away.
Yeah, originally, our, our plan had the buildings closer to Dusty Lane with my conversation with you. You'd asked if we could, whatever we could do to, to help move them away from there. We did that, trying to be, again, we've tried to do everything we can to be good neighbors, even where the buildings are closest to the property line, they're, they're, it's the end of the building, that way there aren't balconies overlooking people's homes. We really have tried to be as sensitive as, as we, as we can. I live here, I want to be, excuse me, I want to be a good neighbor, and I've made every effort I can to do so.
And one other thing, on, I know the commission on, is there, what is the fence height again? Is it six or eight foot on Dusty Lane?
It's six, it's six feet behind a 20-foot natural buffer. That, the, the foliage there is pretty thick. And so honestly, a six-foot privacy fence is really kind of a waste of money because you can't see that anyway through the, through the foliage.
Okay, so the foliage of pine trees and the thicket through there will be on the other side of the fence?
Yeah. With 10 acres, and then actually, if, if, once we get to grading, if we can actually leave more natural buffer, if it's feasible, depending on the final grading plan, we'll do that. With 10 acres, there's a tremendous amount of landscaping to keep up. Anything, anything that I can leave natural and provide A, buffer, and B, not have to maintain is, is a win for everybody.
Okay, alright. And then the buffer on the other side for Bell Cut Off is six foot as well or eight foot?
I believe it, I don't have a friend.
Eight foot?
Eight foot along, yeah, Bell Cut Off along the residences, and then six everywhere else.
Okay. Is there any chance we could do, go eight foot on Dusty, the Dusty Lane side?
Honestly, I, I've, I've stretched the budget. Having to access Highway 17 is costing me a tremendous amount of money that I wouldn't have had, otherwise had to do. We did this development budget a year ago. I've received tax credits based on the initial budget. Honestly, if I thought it would, if I thought it was money well spent, I'd say, let's just do it and not go. But honestly, you're not going to be able to, whether it's six feet, eight feet, or even 10 feet, with that foliage, it's, it's really wasted money that isn't going to help the residents. And I hate to be, I don't know, argumentative, but I just don't, that's throwing money away.
I'm just asking the question so the residents would have a idea of what's going on.
And like, the, the fencing is, I'm, I think I've mentioned before, I'm as concerned about site security as, as anyone. I don't want anybody passing through the, the property. Anytime I have an issue, it's because it comes from, from off-site.
Okay, alright. That's the last of the questions I have right now.
Commissioners, does anybody have any more questions for Mr. Hightower or for Mr. Davenport? Okay, this is a public hearing. If there is anyone here who wants to speak in favor of this project, please come to the podium and state your name. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak against this project? Please come to the podium and state your name.
I'm sorry, I get nervous when I'm talking to people. Okay, I'm Linda Carter, I live at Bell Cut Off Road. The fencing part, I have a question about, because when the Board of Commissioners approved this, it wasn't six foot, it wasn't eight foot, it was a 10-foot fence that was approved at the board. So I'm just asking, what's going behind my house? I mean, you've got eight foot on the side.
Ma'am, would you turn, would you turn this way?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Address the Commissioners, thank you.
Okay, I just need to know, I mean, like I said, it wasn't six foot, it wasn't eight foot, it was a 10-foot fence is what it was approved as. So he's saying where the emergency exit is, they're going to put eight foot. Well, now he's changed it where in back of our house and down Dusty Lane, he's going to put a six-foot fence. And I just don't understand, if it's approved at 10, why is he able to change that? That's just my question.
Mr. Postal, can you address that?
Yeah, no, I was actually confused about that too, but I, I listened to the minutes, and they'd start talking about a 10-foot fence, but what the actual motion was, was that it would be the same height fence as was, was approved for the Southern Retreat, RV Park rezoning. And that was an eight-foot tall privacy fence.
Why does he have to put an eight foot, the whole thing?
Well, the commission only said that the eight-foot fence had to go against the Bell Cut Off Road properties. They didn't say it had to go along.
Oh, I'm, I'm on Bell Cut Off Road.
Sure, right. So, right, yeah, the BOC requires an eight-foot privacy fence here, and they didn't require it anywhere, anywhere else in their location.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this project?
Hi, I'm Anna Millicent. I live on Cedar Dale Road. My husband and I bought property out here to avoid what's going on at the end of our road. There's no medical facility out where we live, there's no sidewalks out where we live. It's unless you have a vehicle public. How can you drive anywhere? I don't see where it's beneficial to have this type of neighborhood at the end of my road. We never expected this to happen when, when we moved out there. That's one of the reasons why we moved out of town. And of course, it's building up out there, but I don't see where he can sugarcoat it all he wants, it's subsidized housing. He can sugarcoat it. We're definitely not pleased, we're actually considering selling our property and moving. I don't see where he should be able to get and trample my American dream when I'm paying full price for it. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please come to the podium and state your name.
I'm Elmer Millicent, my wife had just spoke, she's a lot nicer than me. First of all, sir, you expressed at the meeting that she was.
Sir, would you please turn and speak to you.
She expressed at the county commissioners' meeting that he was concerned about affordable housing for the lower-income people out there. There's lower-income people on St. Simon's Island. How many properties has he built over there for them? Obviously, he doesn't have a concern for them, he's concerned about putting money in his pocket. He's come out there, we have 14 acres just on the other side of Dusty Lane. Our tax values will plummet once this, and he can call it affordable housing, whatever he wants, it's Section 8 housing. There was never discussed an emergency exit coming out on Dusty Lane. Put a fence there, is there going to be a gate? If so, or is it going to be locked? If not, that's going to just become a third driveway for people to go in and out, go walking through and everything else, same way with Bell Cut Off. Fire department's right there, they don't even have to get on to 17 to access that property. And right now, a six-foot fence over there and a 20-foot buffer, he's got enough room, he can do a bigger buffer, and if it's not within his budget to put a six-foot or an eight-foot fence, there's another lady right now interested in buying that 10 acres from him and keeping that mess from coming out there and ruining, as my wife said, our American dream. I did 20 years in the military, I've lived in cities, I'm sick of cities. We bought out there to get away from all this. And now he wants to say he's going to be a good neighbor. He lives on St. Simon's Island, he's coming over here ruining the mainland, when in reality they're putting toll roads on the causeway, toll booths, to keep the mainland people off of St. Simon's Island. He shouldn't be allowed to come over here and ruin our way of life just to put a jingle in his pocket. Except that's all he wants, I see.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please step up and say your name.
Hello, my name is Frank Zino. So kind of piggybacking off what they said, I'm their neighbors, I live on 160 Cedar Dale Road. I just bought the property and I honestly have never, you know, talked or seen either one of these people, and that's kind of the point. Me and my family moved out there to get away. We bought four and a half acres, we brought, for a pretty good price. We've already dropped an extra $100,000 into our house, just to kind of hear this news, you know, like the whole point of us moving here. I still work in Jacksonville, I drive literally two and a half hours, five days a week, there and back, to enjoy our house, our property, we have two little girls, to give them, like they said, the American dream of quiet and solitude. And I just, you know, we saw this, you know, the, the signs, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, or, you know, kind of like, what's this? The reason two of us being up here is, you know, my wife is an attorney up here in Brunswick as well, so she can be closer to the court, and we, you know, we just kind of wanted to start a new life up here of, like I said, quiet and solitude. And I just, I just don't see that, I see that really getting ruined, to be honest with you. And this is a huge investment for us, it's a huge life change for us to live the way we live here now, we absolutely love it, we wouldn't change a, a thing. But, you know, I just, I wanted to definitely come up here and, and say my piece, because, I mean, we operated our, our, our family from Jacksonville, I, like I said, I still work there, but, you know, a lot of people are sick of the city, like, like these fine people have said back here, and they want quiet, they want solitude, they want to look at the stars at night, and they, and they just want peace and quiet. And I just don't think peace and quiet is, is going to, is going to last much longer in that area. So that is all I have to say, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Yes, I'm Brenda Williams, and I live on Dusty Lane. One of the main issues that I'm concerned with is the traffic. The traffic is really terrible out there. When there was a wreck on 95, all that traffic reversed to 17 and 82. Now it's so busy, it's hard to, my sister got in a wreck right there on Arnold Palmer, because when you go to turn to your left, all these cars are shooting around you to try to get by because they're in so big of a hurry to go somewhere. And I'm afraid with a lot of small children, young children that go to school out there, yeah, it's a few blocks away, several blocks away, the school, but there's a lot of kids that's going to want to ride their bikes to school. And somebody's going to get hurt, you know, with, with the way the traffic is out there, unless you are out there and see it on a daily basis like we do. We deal with that every day. And I'm just afraid someone's going to get hurt. When you've got a lot of kids on the main highway, that busy, something's going to happen, and Lord forbid, you know? So I appreciate y'all listening to me. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
My name is Vincent Vlone, me and my wife just moved here literally two months ago. We moved here from Charlotte, North Carolina, obviously a pretty big city. We came here for what everybody else was saying, peace and quiet, away from everything. And we feel like we've been rooked if, if this housing is going to be put in our backyard. I think that folks should reconsider, because I believe that development around this area has potential, but I don't think development's going to happen with this kind of housing coming into this area. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
My name is Leon Carter, and I'm worried about traffic. I worked with Seaboard Construction for 40 years putting in stuff like this. That is the worst place to make an outlet. They somebody really going to get hurt out there. And I, I don't know what their plans are, but that is very dangerous. I go pick up my grandson every day at Ridley, it's 3:30. When I come back around, get on 17, turn back on Bell Cut Off Road, I live on Bell Cut Off Road. Sometime it'll take me three or four minutes just to get back on Bell Cut Off Road off of 17, that traffic is so bad out there. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mr. Hightower, Mr. Davenport, would you like to address any of this?
Good evening, Jake Hightower with Robert's Civil Engineering. We wrote down all the points of what were said, and we can pretty much run through quite a bit of them. A large majority of the questions and comments were issued around zoning. For site plan, what we're going to do is we're trying to make sure that our buffers are adequate to make sure that whether this is 64 units or whatever it is, the adequate buffers are there. The zoning, which happened in the middle of last year, allows for 160 units on this property. Mr. Davenport here is sticking to his original plan of 64 units. So that kind of addresses some of the zoning, can, some of the, just to speak towards the zoning, but the, the big piece of what Robert's Civil is a part of is traffic. That's something that I can speak to, and then Mr. Davenport can come behind me. But 17's going to be, is a, is a Georgia DOT road. So we've been in conversations with them, and we've already commissioned a traffic study, which is in your packet. There will be strapping required. Traffic is a definite concern for us, and it's one that we can address, and we address on a frequent basis for when developments occur. We work with the DOT to make sure that there is, I mean, they have, they have a very robust manual that is dictated upon, trips per day, the speed, distances between driveways, all of that is taken into account. And Mr. Davenport is going to have to basically spend quite a bit of money to get the surveying done at that entrance since that was a requirement, and he's basically, has agreed to everything that the, that the county has asked. We've aligned, realigned the road to. Um, we've aligned, realigned the road to, go in line with Martin Palmer, basically doing whatever we can to make that access, uh, safe. And again, we're going to go through the entire G.D.O. process, uh, to make sure that, that, uh, the restrapping is done and according to their standards, they're already in place. Other than that, um, that's pretty much, I think, quite a few points. Do you have any that you want to make?
I just, I understand the neighbors' concerns, and, and again, I share them. But, we, uh, you know, originally, we were going to have our entrance off of Bell Cut Off, which allowed for two right-hand turns if I went, if you went, any direction you wanted to go. Commission wanted us to go to Highway 17. We're doing it. We're addressing that. Um, we're addressing the extra cost. We're going to make it as safe as humanly possible. Um, we, we've done everything we can to meet the requirements of the ordinance, and, and I hope, I, I, you see that I've taken the extra steps, um, to try and make this as, as nice a development as, as humanly possible and to minimize as much impact as I can. Again, I live in this community too. I'm here to be as, as good of a neighbor as possible, and, like I said, I'm looking forward to continuing.
Commissioners, do you guys have any questions of, of Mr. Hightower or Mr. Davenport?
I, I do have, but I'm not sure it's for Mr., I know it's for, not for Mr. Davenport, possibly for Mr. Jake, but maybe Steph could tell us all the things that this property could be used for. Could Maurice, is that possible, sir?
Sure. Yeah, this was rezoned to a medium residential, can be used for single-family homes, duplexes, townhomes, as we know, multifamily. So, the wa, the full gamut of residential products at 16 units per acre.
So, at 16 units per acre, he could build 160 units if he wanted to be a bad neighbor?
That's correct, as Jake stated, yes.
And he, and, and Mr. Davenport has reduced this down to 64 units on 10 acres?
That's correct.
I think that roughly equate, it's just a tad bit more than a 6,000 square foot lot subdivision.
One other point, just reading back through my notes of some of the questions, is there was a specific question about whether there will be a gate on that emergency access, and that has been discussed, that there will be a gate, knock box at the fire department. It will be closed, so there will not be people cutting through there. There are no veh, no vehicular traffic, uh, when that gate's in place, and, and so that's emergency use only.
Sir, you've already spoken. Okay, you want to come up and ask your question?
Curious to know, uh, are these rental properties?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and I'm assuming Mr. Davenport is the owner? Correct? Is there a limit to how many people could live in each dwelling?
Absolutely, I'm sure that's-
Mr. Davenport, would you like to come up and answer these questions so that he doesn't have to keep looking backwards?
Sir?
Yes, um, there are, there are actually HUD guidelines as far as occupancy. I believe it's, it's either one and a half or two persons per bedroom, um, is, is the maximum that would be allowed, not to mention just the practicality of, of too many people. I mean, I don't think people appreciate, uh, because of the tax credit program, the amount of scrutiny that we get. We get inspections, we have fi, we have tenant file inspections, um, property inspections, making sure that I maintain this to the, uh, to the highest quality.
Does that, go ahead.
I do have a question while you're up here. Um, sorry, did that answer you?
Let, let's, let's, let this gentleman go back to say-
No, you answered my question. I, I still don't like it, but I appreciate the answer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chrissy?
So, I, you know, I don't need to be on the record on this, but I'll say it. I think it's offensive to me that we are talking about the people that are going to live in a complex instead of about the complex. I just, I want to be on the record, maybe I do want to be on the record with that. Um, you know, if the concerns are about that it's an apartment complex and there's more people there, that's a different conversation than let's talk about the people that are going to live there. But on that point, I mean, just knowing a good bit about affordable housing programs and the need for that in our community, for our working-class, um, community, I know this is not your first rodeo on one of these complexes and you own some others, but just maybe, um, it would be helpful to share some of the, um, criteria or that, of, of folks that-
Sure.
What, what they have to meet to live there, to maybe make, help a better understanding of, of who's going to live in the community. Because I think it appears anyways, there's some concerns, not so forefront, that it's an apartment complex, but who might be living in the complex, which is just-
Those, we call that those people.
Yeah.
And the reality is, this is designed for, again, this is, this is a mixed-income development. So, there are, out of 64 units, there are eight market rate units that I can charge as much rent as I want. Um, there are 55 affordable units and then one, uh, onsite manager unit. I make provisions to have onsite management. But this is designed for someone in our community at the, rents will be at market, what they call 60% of the area median income and 50% of the area median income. So, it's designed for someone who's maybe a, a single person, and I have, um, I've got roughly, uh, with, uh, maybe a single person at the low end could make maybe $11 an hour. So, um, and then at the higher end, maybe a single parent with two children could make upwards of, uh, $20 an hour. So, that's the, the bandwidth, for lack of a better word, of who we're trying to reach. You know, there's really, you know, public housing has a purpose, and it serves people up to a certain income limit. And then, there's market rate, which in our community, um, over the past couple of years, has really taken off. Rents have, have climbed faster than, than incomes. So, it's kind of the forgotten middle for wage earners in our community. And that's, that's who we're trying to serve, is kind of that, that middle, somebody who's got out there doing well and, but still can't afford that full market rent. At, you know, a, a three-bedroom in this community can be 14, 15 hundred dollars a month, if not more. I'm able to rent it for, uh, 750, 800 dollars a month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, in short, it's, it's people that, that live and work in our community and get up and go to work every day.
Thank you. Commissioners? I guess I should ask first if there's, to say that we're, that our public comment portion is closed. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'd like to just point out to the residents that are here, that spoke in opposition, those that have just bought homes, I'm very sympathetic to your plight. We, we voted on this rezon five, six months ago. What we are here to do tonight is not to decide if this is an infringement on your property rights, if this is going to lower your property value. That's not what we're here to do tonight. We're here to vote on a site plan. The, the rezon was done prior. I voted against it. Several of my fellow commissioners did as well. Unfortunately, that ship has sailed. So, what we're here to discuss tonight is to approve the site plan or disapprove the site plan. So, personal attacks, smart words, they're not needed. That should have been done six months ago. I'm sorry that, that you and your family didn't, weren't aware of that when you bought the home. I, I'm, again, I'm sympathetic to your plight, but we have a task to do tonight, and it's not to decide if this is right or wrong.
Commissioners? Are you ready to vote? Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to vote, I'd make a motion to pass SP 4972 as presented.
Second. We have a motion in second? All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. All opposed?
Forty-two.
The motion passes. Next on our agenda is SP 4985 Cannon's Coastal Cleaners. It's being presented by Christopher Carrington.
Good evening, Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning again. Uh, so, background on the project, uh, please consider site plan approval for a 1,080-square-foot accessory building. Uh, Cannon's Coastal Cleaner is an eco-friendly commercial laundry that has been in our community since 1993, and it also has three locations. Right here is the zoning map. Here is the site plan. Uh, the shaded area to the right is where the storage building is proposed to go. And here are your possible actions. Uh, again, we do have Jake Hightower here, uh, and also Cliff Woodman for the project.
Does anyone have any questions of Christopher? Would you like to come up? And bring Mr. Woodman?
Good evening, Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering, as well as Mr. Cliff. Uh, we're here to ask that you approve the site plan as presented for the additional storage facility on their existing business. And, uh, we're available for any questions, if you have any.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay. This is a public hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone, uh, within the courtroom who would like to speak, uh, in favor of this site plan? Is there anyone here in opposition who would like to speak? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners, what say you?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve SP 4985 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? All in favor? It is unanimous.
Nothing controversial.
Okay, next up is, uh, Ms. Stephanie Leaf. Uh, she will present CUP 4982 Southern Retreat RV Park Phase 3.
This is Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is CUP 4982 Southern Retreat RV Park. And, uh, y'all may recall, um, back in December, um, y'all reviewed a site plan for Phase 2 of the Southern Retreat RV Park. So, just to familiarize, this is, um, Exit 29 area. This is, um, Highway 17, 82 intersection. This is Blythe Island Highway. Uh, Phase 1 of Southern Retreat is here, that's the existing phase. Phase 2 is, uh, back here where you see the PD. And then, uh, Mr. Garcia is under contract to purchase this adjacent property that currently has a, um, single-family home and a couple of radio towers on it. Um, so it's mostly open through this area, and he's looking to, um, do a RV park on this site. Um, this property is zoned highway commercial, so an RV park is a conditional use permit in the zoning district. So, that's why it's before you this evening. And just to show you a little bit more about the area, so there's other highway commercial property adjacent, um, as you get closer to the intersection. Uh, this is the Majestic Oaks neighborhood behind here. And then this corner, uh, where it's general commercial, this is, uh, Bay Harbor Church. And then there's highway commercial and local commercial across the street. So, their current proposal, um, is for, um, is for the use on the site, but there is a companion site plan application that you'll see after this agenda item. They are proposing 180, um, RV pads with full hookups and also a laundry bathhouse. The existing single-family home, they're proposing to convert to the laundry and bathhouse. And then they also, um, have a lake on the property. They are showing, um, their access, they do have an access onto Blythe Island Highway currently, um, but because of security reasons and to be able to control the access into the, um, RV parks, they would like to have the access come through existing Phase 1 into this property so that they can control everything through one access. Um, there is a standard, uh, for RV parks and highway commercial to get a conditional use permit, they have a maximum density of 15 units per acre. Um, so the lot is about 14 acres currently. Um, they could do 210 of RV sites on this property. They are proposing 180. Uh, this is a survey of the property. And then this is their proposed site plan that I mentioned, you'll, you'll see after this item. Uh, Blythe Island Highway is here on the right-hand side of the screen. Down here in this corner is the, um, the house that they're going to convert to the laundry and bathhouse, and this is their current access to, into the property. Um, in the rear of the property, they are showing a lake. And then, uh, they are having, um, existing, or they're having a couple of different kind of buffers. They're showing a 50-foot buffer along this entire property line that abuts a drainage ditch and then Majestic Oaks properties. Um, next to the lake, so in this section where the lake is not located behind these sites, they are showing an additional 40-foot wooded buffer that would remain intact. And then they are showing a, um, 10-foot type E buffer along Blythe Island Highway in this location. And then the property here, because it's highway commercial, uh, they are not required to have any buffers along this highway commercial property. So, there's just a little bit more on the, the buffers. Um, I will state that you may recall, um, in the December meeting and really since that meeting, there's been, um, quite a, quite a few concerns that have come into the county, um, from adjacent residents regarding the buffers. And so, I wanted to just put a little bit more additional information in there to, to specify kind of the expectations of how these buffers are treated. Um, so, on the Phase 2 property, um, that had similar buffers to what they're showing on Phase 3, um, they did do underbrushing, but all the trees have remained intact in that 50-foot buffer. And then there was another 40-foot wooded strip, um, also part of Phase 2. They had quite a bit of trespassing activity, um, on that property, so they did have to do a lot of debris removal, and so they did have to do underbrushing to really remove all that debris. So, the trees have remained intact in the buffer, but there was underbrushing. But we've received a lot of concerns about the buffers being, um, disturbed, and so I just wanted to just kind of put that out there, um, just for additional discussion, that, um, underbrushing may occur in these buffers that they're proposing, but our expectation is that all the, the trees remain in these buffers. Um, so these are your possible actions, and this is a public hearing. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Chris Amos and Mr. Garcia are here, uh, for the application tonight. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Ms. Lee?
So, just to clarify what you just said about the Phase 2 buffer, so, the, the county's determination is, is that the buffer is in place as it's supposed to be in Phase 2?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
Right.
Commissioners, anyone else have any questions of Ms. Lee? Mr. Amos, would you like to come forward?
So, I'm, uh, Chris Amos with CSCC Incorporated. Mr. Garcia is here as well, if you've got any questions for him. I would like to clarify that buffer issue. So, there was no underbrushing done in the 50-foot buffer, except for the removal of debris from the homeless encampments that were in there. Um, the site has been underbrushed, has not been cleared and grubbed. Um, most of the trees, uh, all of the nice trees still remain. They're all flagged up, you can see them. The buffer was flagged by a surveyor before the underbrushing on the main part of the track was done. Um, part of that was so that we could see how the loads, roads were going to lay out. Part of that was because, uh, we wanted to be able to gain access to the lake, which at one time was going to be dug a different way, and now we're doing something different. But, um, so, I've, I think that we've taken care of the, well, we've incorporated the same buffers on this, on this site plan, which we're not here to talk about yet, but, um, we've, um, taken care of the same buffers, the 50-foot buffer, the 40-foot wooded buffer. There's, the lake is fairly large and is going to provide additional buffering as well. And I would like everybody to remember, this is highway commercial property, so there could be hotels and truck terminals and all kinds of other things on this site, um, if we don't, I think the RV park is actually a pretty low-impact use for this highway commercial property compared to some of the other allowed uses that would not need a conditional use permit to go in there. permit to go in there. And I can answer any other questions that anybody may have on the CUP, and then we'll talk about the site plan, I guess, in a minute.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
How many pads have been built in Section, in Phase Two so far?
The work has begun, the clearing and grubbing, not, the clearing and grubbing has not started. Mr. Garcia was going to dig the pond that's going in there as a surface mine. He had somebody lined up to do that. They were going to use the dirt on one of these big parking lot, just going in at the port. And they had some pretty tight specifications on soils, and the soils didn't comply with those specs. So now we've backed off to do, to go back to the original plan and dig the pond. What we're actually going to do with a lot of the dirt from the pond is build a berm along the railroad right-of-way to provide some visual screening of the park from the railroad and the Anchor Drive residences that are on the other side of the railroad, as well as to provide some screening from the trains for the people that are in the park.
How many pads are in Phase Two?
None. He hasn't built any pads in Phase Two.
Well, no, how many were approved by this commission?
200 and...
Okay, because some of the paperwork shows 210.
I've been working with Stephanie.
This commission approved 208 cabins. Is that what the plans are still?
I believe that's right. I think that we made a mistake in one of the notes when we resubmitted, that the number of units showed up in multiple different places. But we went in on Phase Two and removed all of the pads that were on that leg that went back down to 303. All of that's gone. The road that goes down beside that neighborhood is gone. And we removed enough other pads to get us back to the number that the commission approved. So the site plan has been revised to meet the, what the approved site, what the commission approved at the NPC meeting.
Has the fence been built?
No, and we had the discussion about that today. Mr. Garcia plans on building that fence all the way down the Majestic Oaks property line whenever we get under construction with the project. He's going to do that first.
What, why hasn't it been done already?
He hasn't really gotten under construction with Phase Two yet, and I'd have to let him address why the fence isn't up. But we left, as I said, the buffer's there. We haven't touched the buffer. The buffer was flagged, the buffer was left in place as the underbrushing was done, but we've not started any hard construction on the project yet.
I understand it, sir, but you know, my feeling has always been that if this, the planning commission or the Board of Commissioners gives specifics as to what recommendations are for approval of something, then we expect the property owner to follow through with it.
Well, and I guess I misunderstood, what, the fence will be constructed as part of the construction of that phase of the RV park. He's not trying to avoid constructing the fence. He hasn't gotten under construction with any other work in Phase Two yet, so the fence hasn't been put in yet.
This is probably a better question for staff. Is there a time constraint on this?
Yeah, that's a good question. What we will determine is prior to, because they do have some other buildings on Phase Two that would need to get certificate of occupancy. And so at that point in time is when we would inspect to make sure all the elements of the master plan and site plan are intact. So they would actually have until the completion of the project for us to verify that that fence has been installed. You know, of course, sooner the better, I'm sure, to help alleviate some of the noise and visual concerns from neighbors, but technically they have until the completion of the project.
But he's not going to wait until the completion of the project? So the fence is going to go up first before anything else gets done in there?
Okay, we're here to talk about Phase Three. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. So any other questions on the CUP itself?
I have a question. Once you, how many pads are in Three, Mr. Amos?
180.
180?
Yes.
And then 200?
200.
200, and then Phase One, how many spots is there currently, Mr. Garcia?
I'm not sure. I've counted, but I don't remember.
So all that, I'm not good with math, that's how many pads you'll have once you complete?
Total complete, 200, 150, 350, and 180 would be 450, be 500 and some.
And that's probably, that would probably be the largest RV park in Glen County or in this whole southeast, correct?
Yeah.
I would think so.
And how many exits are we, is there going to be an exit right there at the radio station building?
Nope. Everything's going to be inside the building. Everything is going to be inside my property. All the exit and everything is still be controlled. We won't be impacting everything outside. Everything is still going, coming back from my park. We're going to have security and everything inside.
And your roads that go through there, I know in one, they're pretty tight. With that much volume of campers, I could foresee, you know, a fifth wheel or pull-by, you're going to be, you know, running into some challenges.
Well, my park was built in the 70s, and the roads was really narrow that time. These roads did a lot bigger for bigger rigs that we got, but we still can manage everybody. We got rigs sometimes that are like 80, 90 feet long, and they make it to the park with no problems.
Commissioners, any other questions of Mr. Amos or Mr. Garcia?
Is the plan to construct, if this was all happens and goes through the Board of Commission, will you do Phase Two and Phase Three at the same time?
Yes. Pretty much we'll be working on the lake, digging the lake. And the reason, they just kind of verify and just clarify for you guys about the fence. I tried to start with the fence and then the county, when they went to check it out, if my buffer wasn't touched, they told me I can do anything until I got all my permits for my lake and everything done. That's, I cannot disturb the roots. I cannot disturb the nothing, anything that only, the only thing I can do, and they told me, and that was the county, they told me, the only thing I can do is lock the property and get the underbrush. That's the only thing we've been doing and cleaning my property, cleaning all the debris, cleaning everything the homeless people left. That's what is nothing else done on my property. But like I answered your question about working on both of them, yes, we've been digging the lake in one and pretty much tried to get this one first.
When do you anticipate, Mr. Amos, of land disturbing permit?
We've combined both of these parcels. We will combine both of these parcels into the same permit. We're working on this one right now, and as soon as he gets approval and we get approval from the Board of Commissioners, then we'll be submitting those plans to the county and to the Soil and Water Conservation Commission within a couple of weeks after we get approval.
Ms. Leaf, you don't have to have a land disturbing permit to put up a fence, do you, ma'am?
No, sir.
So Monday morning, he could have the fence put up if he had good intentions. He could have the contractor come and put the fence up.
I believe that would get on the news.
How quick, Mr. Garcia, can we have the?
I can start as soon as I can get the material. My question is, did I get it, did I have to apply for any kind of building permit to put the fence on it? Because I won't be approved for it. Okay. Yep, we can start right away. That's not a problem. But I will do, the only way I can do it, that way you guys know, I can do it all the size of Majestic Oaks. I cannot do the size by the train track yet because that one's going to have that wood bu, the dirt buffer. And I mean, I don't trust the excavator people.
I don't think that the area beside Majestic, not Majestic Oaks, but by the train track, I don't think that's the area of concern.
Okay, not a problem.
We would just like to alleviate some of these folks.
That'd be fine. We can start soon as I can.
Aggravation, and maybe if you get a fence put up across there, that it will help with their feelings a little bit.
No problem. We can do that.
And I really don't know what else you folks can do other than that.
We're working on it. We will.
Okay. This is a public comment. This is a public hearing, CUP 4982. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone in the audience? If so, come up and state your name at the podium. Is there anyone present in the audience who would like to come up and speak in opposition? If so, please come up to the podium and state your name.
My name is Marion McGraw, and I live at 248 Long Way South. I would just like to ask you, as the planning commissioners, to follow the guidelines from Glen County Ordinance 904 when considering this special conditional use permit. And this is some of the things that I think are pertinent from that. Conditional uses are so classified because they more intensely dominate the area in which they are located, and they require certain controls in order to ensure compatibility with other uses in districts in which they're proposed to be located. The following are some of the areas that you are, as planning commissioner, as county commissioners, are to consider when reviewing a conditional use permit. Number one, the effect the proposed activity will have on traffic flow along adjoining streets and ingress and egress to the property. 200 additional RV spaces have already been approved to use the same entrance as the current, as he said, 155 spaces plus the Fish Tails Pub and Grill customers. Has a traffic study been done to determine the impact on already busy Blythe Island Highway of 180 more RV spaces, all using the single ingress and egress to the facility? The location of off-street parking facilities. Is there adequate parking for restaurant customers and RVs to check in and out? The amount and location of open space. With 180 RV spaces, which is approximately 12 to 14 spaces per acre on 14 acres plus a lake, there'd be little, if any, open space. The density of the current RV park is nine RV spaces per acre. And of the approved Phase Two addition is six RV spaces per acre. This is a lot more dense than Phase Two. Protective screening, an eight-foot privacy fence and proposed buffers of 50 feet undisturbed buffer and 40 feet of woody buffer will not be adequate to shield the established single-family homes in Majestic Oaks from noise, light, and environmental pollution. Hours and manner of operation. According to the staff report, this would be a 24/7 business, so there would be constant activity and traffic. Outdoor lighting. Light pollution from streetlights, lights from RVs, and personal vehicles coming and going would be continual. Compatibility with surrounding land use. This expansion, as proposed, would not be compatible, in my opinion, with the 52 single-family homes in the established neighborhood of Majestic Oaks or the nearby church facilities. If this conditional use permit is approved, it is vital that specific conditions and safeguards be imposed for the protection of the public interest as stated in Section 904. Thank you.
Is there someone else who would like to come to the podium and speak in opposition? Please state your name.
Donna Collins. I live at 253 Long Way South, Majestic Oaks. And you all have to be as weary from all of this as we are. It's become a full-time job. And two years ago, when we first came, Mr. Garcia was encouraged to be a good neighbor. And he had a property manager speak and invited any of us that wanted to participate, that they would drive us around his property in a golf cart and speak with us, tell us of his plans. And so Mrs. McGraw that just spoke took them up on the offer. She made three phone calls. And when they did return her call, they told her that the offer was no longer available. It seems to me that it would be simple if we could just get along. A privacy fence, some mature landscaping, underbrushing, whatever you want to call it, cannot be replaced that was underbrushed. And I've drawn my own conclusions as to why that underbrushing began on a Friday afternoon at 5:00 on a holiday weekend and continued until Tuesday morning when complaints were made. And I don't accept that the 50-foot buffer is still in place because the site plan is incorrect. There isn't, at one time I heard 185 total feet buffer and additional 15 feet. It has been very confusing getting emails constantly and all of us keeping up and making phone calls and verifying information. But a fence is a start and putting up a border, a natural buffer. Because you can still, a chain link fence is still going to be able to see through the park. And I speak about Phase Two because it does affect Phase Three because past performance is an indication of future. And before we know it, the entire area is going to be stripped. And some of my neighbors moved there, and that's their final home. That's where they chose to retire. But a fence, privacy, and buffers and landscaping, if I don't see what they're doing or hear what they're doing, I don't have a care within the legal laws. It's not my concern. And the last time we spoke, we were here, Majestic Oaks, for Spartan Development and the Southern Retreat RV Park. Brian Hunt with Robert's Civil Engineering came up to us, introduced himself, gave us his business card, met with us that next Monday, and for the first time in 16 years, saw work in Majestic Oaks. He was kind of the mediator. So Spartan Development and Majestic Oaks have made a step towards each other. I would like to see that take place with Mr. Garcia. I don't have anything against anyone wanting to build a better life, businesses, but I'd like us protected as well. And it would be nice to have a relationship with him, that at some point in time we see something go on that we could call him. Mr. Garcia, we observed this last night. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come and speak in opposition? If so, please come to the podium and state your name. Mr. Amos or Mr. Garcia, would you like to address anything that was brought up?
Since by the park on the Phase Two, I tried and I walked the whole neighborhood, give my business card. I made a meeting on my restaurant, invite the whole neighborhood to go and ask all the questions they can have. And we only got, what, 15, 20 people show up?
Mr. Garcia, speak to us.
Yeah, about 20 people show up. And that's it. I mean, when they, when they asking us to do the tour behind the RV park, we got the open doors. Anybody that want to come to the RV park, we always help them out. I don't know when that happened, if it happened, but we got open doors. We don't got no fencing in there. I mean, anybody can drive there if you want to and look at what we got. We don't hide in nothing. We don't start in late hours. We just start when we can, do the jobs, and that's all we do. We just do the jobs. That's all we do. But anybody that know the area, that be in this area for a while, they can tell. We've been doing a lot of changes on that place. We just changed the restaurant to a different name to get a better quality, people coming in better. We increasing the quality on that exit, and that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for making worse, I'm looking for make it better. And that's my goal.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Garcia?
I have one. I kind of, this for staff too, and this kind of...
Mr. Garcia?
You need to go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. You know, the lady said that they start on Friday evening, went till Tuesday and everything. And I'm wondering, you know, doing all this construction, you know, the neighborhoods adjacent to it, was there any conversation about putting a fence up there? Because their whole weekend, you know, was disruptive, probably at the best, probably was terrible weekend because I don't know how long y'all worked, you know, did you work Sunday or whatever? But, you know, is there something going forward? Or maybe I'm missing something where neighborhoods are not impacted by construction on weekends? And maybe we should have a fence? And maybe we should have a fence in place before we dig a lake or clear or do underbrushing? Because we got a neighborhood there of eighty homes that was impacted negatively. You know, is there, in the part of the, you know, where Mr. Garcia comes and says, "We're going to start this project," could we have something in place that, you know, we have something to protect the neighborhoods, whether it's him or someone else down the line? Is there, or is there something in place where you can do a fence at this time just to protect? I know a lot of construction sites, you got a little, you know, piece of tarp. But these folks were impacted over a weekend. You know, is it up to the county to let him know you need to, you know, do this during Monday through Friday? Or is there supposed to be a fence at that point? You know, I know, but, because I'm looking at it from the neighborhood aspect on this, just the clearing. Maybe I could get some direction on that. I'm not sure.
Can I answer that question?
Yeah.
Commissioner Park, the people that own the property next to yours and your mother-in-law, if they wanted to go out on a Saturday or Sunday to take a good shot and cut that property, would that be an issue for you?
No, but we're talking big equipment. It's a little bit different.
The reason why is because those people have property rights. His RV park is not in their subdivision.
Yeah.
We have to protect those people because their subdivision joins his RV park. Now, those folks can start an HOA, and they can require people that's working in their neighborhood not to start before eight o'clock in the morning or not off at five o'clock in the afternoon. But I don't see how we could tell some, an adjacent property owner, because I'm going to tell you what's going to happen. The first time somebody comes on my property, Myers Plantation, and tells me I shouldn't do anything on the weekends, it's not going to be a criticized. It's just not going to be. Because I paid the taxes there. I have the right to do what I want to do to my property, as long as it's legal when I want to. And underbrushing and cutting timber is a maintenance issue. I'm actually a master timber harvester, and I'm in the land clearing business. And you can clear land or you can cut the timber anytime you want to, and you never have to ask permission from anybody. And it should be that way because it's just basically a property rights issue. We don't want to get into having to ask the county permission for the people that own the property next to your place and mine.
And I understand that fully with the, you know, property rights. But it just, the, we're talking a big area. And I agree, Mr. Garcia has a right to do whatever he wants. I just, you know, starting it on a Friday evening, did y'all start it on Friday evening?
I don't have a crew, I don't have a crew for the weekends. I got a crew on call on the weekends for working the park, to maintenance the park. But we don't have to work on the weekends. But if we have to work on the weekends, we will. But when I get construction, I can control where people be working. I can control the hours in the daytime. But in the weekend, I can't control if they want to work on the weekends or not.
Fair enough. I stand corrected.
And I'll add to what both of you have said, Mr. Garcia stated. So I think some of the difference here was the work that has been done on the site so far has been timbering, and that's not a permit they get from the county. So the county can't regulate the timbering operations. But once they do have the Land Disturbance Act permit in place, you know, knowing that there's, you know, been a lot of concerns, we'll work closely with our engineering team and talk about hours of operation. Because there are, the county ordinance does stipulate what hours you can run machinery and do, and do equipment, you know, days and hours of the week. So we'll make sure that's adhered to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would like to add one more thing. Today, me and two other planning commissioners went to Mr. Garcia's site. I've been in that park. I think I may have been in that park when I was less than ten years old. We knew people that owned it then. I can promise you, it is in better shape today than I have ever seen it. I personally have extensive construction experience, and I didn't see anywhere that the buffers did not conform the way they should. And I ask anybody that if they think they don't conform, would they please get ahold of me? I'd like for them to go show me, because I honestly think the buffers are correct. So I just wanted to add that. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
I was supposed to say that the public, the public comment portion of this was closed. Commissioners?
I just have one point of clarity. Is the fence a chain-link fence or a privacy fence?
So the requirement is a privacy fence. So if it is a chain-link, then it does need to have the slats throughout, so it's completely opaque. I have not seen a design plan for what their fence is, but that is the requirement, that it needs to be privacy.
And the, and it's going to be, there's the neighborhood, there's a drainage ditch, there's a fence, there's a fifty-foot buffer on the whole property line, and then another forty feet where the lake is not.
Correct.
And what does the county require?
So if this was another highway commercial use, if they were, you know, the minimum that would be required along the Majestic Oaks property line, that would either be a twenty-foot landscape buffer with no fence or twelve feet of landscaping with a six-foot privacy fence or landscape wall.
And if we approve the conditional use permit, can it be conditioned on this site plan and not just any site plan?
Yes. Yeah, I think that'd be a good addition. They are required to have a site plan as part of the conditional use permit. But I think that'd be fine to condition that, just so it's very clear.
Yeah, just so they can't go back down to a twenty and everybody's thinking it's ninety.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, commissioners.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve CUP four-nine-eight-two as presented.
All in favor?
You got, you got it. Oh, sorry.
Okay, motion passes. Okay. And opposed, I'm sorry. So the motion passes. Okay, and we have one more. And that would be the site plan approval application.
Yes, this is SP, oh, SP forty-nine-eight-three, and this is the actual site plan. So there's no additional information that I haven't already presented in the conditional use permit application. So again, this is the site plan that was also included in the CUP application. And these are your possible actions. And this is also for public comment, if you want to take additional public comment. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Sorry. So I don't want y'all to think I'm like the person that wants emergency access. But I know they're only going to have one entrance, pre-tighten there. Get an RV that catches on fire, you know, somewhere in the middle of it. So are they doing any kind of emergency at their entrance? Or is the only, even like a maintenance entrance, or is the only entrance, the front entrance?
The plans only include the entrance, you know, coming through Phase One of the retreat, of the retreat, of Southern Retreat. The word retreat is back again. Southern Retreat RV Park. But yeah, I, you know, even though it was not required by any of the review team for that emergency access, I think the comments, you know, we've heard tonight about the number of RV pads, it seems like that would be definitely prudent to have an additional access that could be gated so they can still control their main access. But in case of emergency, you would have a secondary access into the property. Because at this point, they're proposing to close that off.
Any other questions for Ms. Lee before we go to the public comment period?
I had one more. So I know when we were doing the other approval, we talked a lot about people being there for a length of time. That kind of made it more residence than visiting. And I kind of recall that you said that in our current ordinance, maybe that wasn't necessarily addressed. And then I think I maybe asked the question, you know, could somebody have a RV there that they rented out? And then would they be subject to the short-term rental? And I'm not sure we really, and that's not really relevant to the site plan except for, you know, I don't think the intention of the RV park is that folks are living there as their permanent residents in this, you know, in terms of the density and what's being approved.
Right, so they, there are a couple differences between these different phases. So phases, well, phases one and two were part of an older PD from nineteen-seventies, and they did, I'm sorry, no, phase one was part of an older PD. And then phase two, they re-zoned to PD, so that is a new PD. They are limited to thirty days for those two phases. So this, because this site is highway commercial and the conditional use permit, that language is not in the zoning. That thirty-day limitation was actually in the plan development text. So these sites would not be limited by any of our zoning code to thirty days. So I, the intent is not to have, you know, long-term. However, you know, I know we have, you know, a lot of folks that come for the winter and may stay for five or six months. And so this, you know, this zoning would not prohibit that.
But Phase One's PD text does.
That is correct, yes. And I believe Phase Two, but I would need to double-check that. I can't confirm that right now.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Lee? Mr. Amos, would you like to come forward and state your case?
So I can, Chris Amos, again, I can clarify a couple things. One, when we did the Phase Two, we modified the Phase One PD. So now they're all under the same plan development zoning. In terms of the emergency ingress and egress, there are two large driveways onto three-oh-three and multiple routes of access through the park. This particular site plan has a two-lane road that runs all the way around the perimeter. But there's only one place where they connect together across that ditch that there's a single, a single two-lan, or two-lane road that's connecting together. Everywhere else, there's lots of ways to get to an emergency.
But it'll be fenced?
It'll be fenced. I don't know if we're going to, I don't know if we're going to fence the seventeen, right? I mean, it'll be fenced around the park. I believe that we're, that you're going to fence the entire. Let him come up and address that. That's really not a, that's an operations thing.
The other, the other area right here on this right side by the church is already fenced. That's already got a fence on it. And I will put a picket fence on the front of it to control the people coming in, to make it, make it pretty enough. But I don't want to put a chain-link fence on the front of the property or any kind of ugly fence. They just, I want the property to look good. That's what I'm looking for.
Okay. I wasn't sure whether you were like security.
Yeah, we're going to try to secure the whole thing. But so far, right now, the people that used to be in the park, we need it. But now the people that I'm getting in the park is people with a lot more economical gain or something they can do, better people, just to put it that way. And I don't have to worry about people. I have to worry for the exterior people just coming to my park. I don't have to worry for my customers try to go out, cross a ditch, and try to get somebody's house.
I got you.
I don't, not see no point on that.
Mr. Garcia, I was going to wait until we got further along in this, but when we started talking about buffers and fences, I'm going to ask it now. The section that you're saying, two lots over from Bay Harbor Church, you're saying it already has a fence?
Yes, sir.
When I was out there today, we talked about a berm you're going to build along the railroad track in Phase Two.
Yes, sir.
Am I correct, and I grew up out there, that lake doesn't exist?
No.
Are you planning on using that dirt to build a berm potentially on that?
No, it's not burned on this one.
You're not going to do a berm?
The only reason I made the berm in the other one is because the train is happy with the home.
Okay.
But the rest of it, that's the reason I keep it. I'll keep it there.
So you're going to tie into that existing fence?
I can't, I don't know if I'll be able to close from Phase Two to Phase Three because that center road that you see in the mirror, that's county right away.
All right, let me make sure I'm getting my point across. I'm talking about the bottom, down here near where the radio station is.
Right here?
Nope.
Right here.
Here, there.
Yeah, this one already got a fence on it.
Okay. So you're going to tie into the fence on the back side next to Majestic Oaks? Now, what about the front? What's the plan for the front? Are you going to have that, is that basically going to be open and visible to?
It's going to have a four-foot vinyl fence just to be pretty, but that's just to keep.
I got you. All right, just want to make sure there was something there.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Any other questions for Mr. Amos or Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Amos, I know I went out there, and Mr. Edgy and Mr. Bo-Ryden, Sherry went out there the other day, but, or today. But when I was out there, there was an issue with a stake that had fifty foot. And I walked off about thirty foot. It was right kind of directly behind one of the houses. Now, there was no disturbance of the trees up to that point. But it was marked at fifty foot. Did we find out if that was okay? Was the line?
That fifty feet is off the property line. So I overlaid the aerial photograph on the site plan. And there are a couple of areas in there where the tree line bears inside. So there is a distance between the edge of the tree line and the property line.
So it went from the property line, not the edge of the woods?
The buffer was from the property line.
Okay. So we did find out that. Also, Mr. Garcia, on your website, you have a picture of your, an overhead picture of your Phase Two. And then you have under there verbiage your two-hundred lots and everything. Is that picture the two-hundred lots or is that more on your website?
I don't know. It's only, we only got the two-hundred sites approved right now. That's all we got for the website. We don't have nothing else for...
Okay. Because I wanted, it's been a lot of confusion about all this development, and we keep...
Yeah, yeah. So far, we don't have nothing on the website for this project right now.
Well, I'm talking about Phase Two.
For Phase Two, yeah.
Because that's one of the reasons I want to make clear, I voted against the third one, is there's been, you know, I had to go out there, and I want to make sure. But I want to, you know, I want you to be a good steward of that property. And you seem to be doing the best you can with what you got, and you got big plans. I understand that. But, you know, I just want us to, not the commissioner, whoever, come back. And there's two-hundred-and-forty-nine pads and tubes.
No, I don't have to.
So it's two-hundred.
No, I don't have to. I, I think when we get the approval, and I got to get the county to come and inspect in my size, they got inspected, two-hundred sites, they got inspected, two-hundred electrical poles. I mean, there's no way I can add it.
We need to get back to Phase Three, not Phase Two.
And one last question, and this is a safety issue. If, God forbid, one of those breakers or whatever goes bad and one of those RVs catches on fire, by the time the fire department gets in there, you know, you could lose several. I'm just, I'm just thinking maybe less lots out there, you know?
We got three set of breakers. We got the breakers on the campers, they come with the campers. Those, if you got fires, they trip. You got a power pole, they got breakers. That one set up. And we have a main breaker there for the whole road. It killed the whole road completely. And if the whole road get killed, we got the ones that killed the whole park. I mean...
And that's fine. And I know you were trying to do a great part there, but, you know, a little bit more spacing, you know? And congestion is just a, you know, an issue. One entrance, you know, it's just, it seems like, you know, what you're trying to, you're telling us what you want to do is it seems like if you had less spots, you would have more aesthetics and it'd be more, you know, attractive to folks. But it's your project, you do as you please. But I'm just concerned about the fire. You know, if one goes up, man, that's, could get nasty, but seems like you got it under control.
Thank you, sir.
So if that's all the questions, we would like to ask if you would approve it as presented.
Okay, it's still a public comment, and so, so we need to...
I jumped ahead.
That's okay. Is there anyone in this room who would like to speak in favor of this project? Please come to the podium and state your name. this project? Please come to the podium and state your name. Is there anyone here that would like to come and speak in opposition of this project? If so, come and state your name.
I'm still Marion McGraw. At a previous planning commission meeting, Mr. Garcia was encouraged to be considerate of others in the community, to be a good neighbor. He said he walked the whole Majestic Oaks, invited us to a meeting. There's three other people here from Majestic Oaks. He didn't come to my house. I didn't get an invitation before he started the first one. With the proposed site plan for the RV park expansion phase three, there are several suggested conditions and safeguards which could make this development less disruptive to the adjacent established neighborhood of single-family homes and the nearby church facilities. And I would like for you to consider these before anything goes to a vote. Reduce the number of RV spaces to 90. This would make it comparable to the approved phase two expansion of six spaces per acre instead of 12 to 14. If, as often stated, this is to be turned into an upscale RV park, how would the intense density of 12 to 14 per acre be considered upscale? Require a traffic study before approval. The undisturbed wooded, wooded buffer to be truly under, undisturbed, no underbrushing. Install the eight-foot privacy fence, or in my dreams, a sound barrier wall during construction. Thank you for addressing that issue. Limit the hours of construction, outdoor lighting, and hours of operation. The lake to simply be a lake. I don't know if the rumors are true, but we've heard a lot about a splash park or a water park there, which would certainly increase the noise. Development to be closely and regularly monitored for compliance by planning and zoning, and I see that that is happening more and more, and I'm, we're very appreciative of that. I know that the original zoning text for phase one and phase two did limit the occupancy to 30 days, and yet, Mr. Garcia has said there are people that stay there six months. Also, the school bus picks up children there to go to Glenn County schools. I don't think that's just employees. I think that's maybe some full-time residents of some sort. I don't know. But these are things to consider. And if there are no guidelines for phase three that limits the occupancy to a certain amount of time, I'm just afraid that's going to be, I hate to say this, because I've lived in a trailer park before, but like a glorified trailer park with RVs, where people can just stay forever, all crowded up, 180 spaces jammed on top of each other. So, thank you for considering these conditions before you decide. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come to the podium and speak in opposition? Okay. All right, hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
I have a question for Stephanie. What's the trigger for if a traffic study has to be done or not? If this had all been done in one, if phase two and three had been done together, would there have been a need for a traffic study, or is, what's the trigger on this kind of conditional use? Because it is very unique.
Right. Yeah, I mean, currently, our code does not specifically state when a traffic study is required. So, it's our, you know, our engineers, part of our development and review team, that would evaluate, you know, whether it meets certain criteria to get a traffic study. And this access is a state highway, so that's something maybe Mr. Amos or Mr. Garcia can, can touch on with the addition of the units, sharing the one access. I'm not sure if they have to upgrade or get a new access permit from GDOT to allow that. So, with that, GDOT would be analyzing that. So, that's something I have not asked if they need to get a different permit, because they're really expanding the number of, you know, units that are being accessed through that one access onto Highway 303. So, it's really something that we, right now, we just evaluate based on our review, and that did not come up as a requirement in our review.
Mr. Amos is getting his exercise today. He's gonna answer the GDOT question.
Okay, so, we don't have a requirement to obtain any permitting from DOT, because the DOT regulates encroachment into there right away, and then encroachment's already there. There already, there's a large entrance and a large exit drive coming out of the project. There's a lot of room for traffic to stack up inside the park. Quite frankly, I've never seen, all the times I've been out there, I've not ever seen a problem with traffic entering and exiting. It did not come up as part of the staff reviews for a traffic study, so we didn't really, have not considered doing a traffic study for the project.
So, I just, I think that's some clarity while we're talking about GDOT review on the housing piece we just did, is because there's a new access to that.
That is correct. Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Amos, on our last meeting, it was kind of contentious on how many RV spots you could have or you couldn't have. And I actually thought we said it was 180, but Commissioner Strickland, he's probably right. I think we did say 208 cabins. I think that is correct.
I think that's correct. 200 RV spaces and eight cabins, yes.
How did you and Mr. Garcia come, that, this, this nice lady that has spoken several times told us that it was like 6.4 RVs per acre. How, how did you and Mr. Garcia come to the conclusion, after that was as contentious as it was, that we will come with 12, or maybe 15 to the acre?
I, I don't think that we looked at it that way. We looked at what the maximum density allowed under the ordinance was. We looked at how the site plan laid out, how the circulation around the park laid out, and, and quite frankly, the valuation of the property and what he's got to generate in revenue to make that work. And this is a significantly more expensive piece of property than the other one was.
Now, I'm gonna do what I like to do. I want to get right to the point. How many spots can you get by with to make the finances work?
I can't answer that question. He'll have to answer that. We worked, I can say that we worked very hard to get the count to a number that it needed to be at for it to work.
Yeah, we worked for months, I think, just tried to get that, because we're supposed to get 200 and something. And to make it to my satisfaction, to get the more room, right now, between my campers, we got, probably got 15, 10 feet. What we doing now? 30 feet? I'm making double than what I got right now, to make it comfortable for my guests. But I cannot have, from here to the other door, just to have enough room for my guests, they don't need it. It's more land to cut, more real estate that I'm losing. And for the price of that property, that property is a lot more expensive. And for everything that we spend, power, bills, and everything that we do, we have to have, for we can't come out with a close, money to come out, it was close to 175. And I told him, and we come out with 180, and I say, at least we're making five more than what we came. But my goal was 200 in that side, but with my request, we cannot have it. And that's, that was the problem. I, I want to have 200 on it, but if I want to have it, like the other RV parts, or like the ones in Florida that they do right now, it's one right next to each other, because grass don't make you money. The, the ones that make you money is the RV part right there. But I want to make it comfortable for my guests. I want they keep coming back. I got people that coming back for the last 10 years to my park, because we treat the people right, and they feel like they're family. And that's what we try to do. And we care about them. That's all we do. But in the end, I have to be realistic, and I have to make sure that we, the park is making money, because I don't want to make a project that in the end, I'm gonna be to my neck on bills, and, and I don't be able to pay for.
So, one of the reasons we have more RV spaces in this phase than the last phase is because the property configuration is more or less rectangular, and so it's much more efficient layout. We had a lot, a lot of roads that are sweeping around the end of that lake, and parallel roads that are converging back on one another.
And a four-acre pond, too.
And a big, and a mini gold area. Yeah, so there was a lot of, there was a lot of stuff in the last phase that made that higher density not work. And since all the amenities that he's gonna be using are in phase one and two, we didn't need any of those amenities on this side, except for the bath and, and bathhouse and restroom.
This side is just for my people coming in and out daily, weekly, daily, weekly, just to go out in it. That's why it's close to the front, close to the end. People coming in the mornings, and in the afternoon, till 11 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, check in. And in the mornings, they want to leave 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, and they go. They go back to Florida, they go back to North Carolina, North Maine, Canada, whatever they do. This year, we got a lot of the people from Canada stay with us, coming back to Florida, and they keep coming back and forth. But that's it. We don't got more traffic than a gas station can have.
Okay, so if we cut the density down, it, tonight, I'm just, I'm asking a hypothetical question. If we tell you you can't have but 150 spaces on that site, is, the, the project is probably killed?
Yeah. Yeah, because there's no way we can make no money in there. Because all the bills, power bills, we include all the service on the property.
Yes, sir.
And there's no way we'd be able to keep up with the maintenance, with the taxes, with everything on that property. We pay bread and breakfast taxes, with all, combined with all the taxes and everything we pay. It's a lot of money coming out. A lot of people, they can put the sides together, and they say, we're making a lot of money. We don't. We're just, we're just making, we're just making a good living for me and my family. That's all.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Steph, one more question, just for clarity. So, there was a original PD text, phase two created a new PD text that phase one was peeled into, I think, basically. So, but this piece has no PD text.
Correct. It's a state highway commercial.
Yes, so they will have to operate under the current and future ordinances of Glenn County.
Correct.
Okay. I think that's a good thing.
Okay, Commissioners. Now, the public comment period is definitely closed, and so I, I need to, to know Commissioners how you want to vote. Do I have a motion?
I have one more question. Is there a splash pad going in on the property? Thank you.
I have one more question, too. What about the radio towers that are on the property? They'll be removed? I'd like to know when they do that. I was, I was a child when they built those things, and my Cub Scout unit went out there and watched them erect those things. A long time ago.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve SP 4983 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. That's right, we are adjourned.
Thank you all.